It's kind of lonely here, Ted. Yeah, she's on vaca- yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Anniversary, I guess. Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty PM on October eighth, twenty twenty-five. Time for our first regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mr. Johnson will offer an invocation and Mr. Schultz will lead us in the pledge. And if you could stand, please do so.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for our friends and neighbors gathered here today, as well as those watching from home. Thank you for the many blessings you have given to us as a city, as well as in our individual lives. And thank you for the opportunity to do good works in your name. And as we endeavor to accomplish those good works, please give us the wisdom, empathy, and courage necessary to do so. But most importantly, humble our hearts and remind us that it is your will and not our own which shall be done. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, Kelly.
Hall. Christman.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Look to excuse, uh, council member Call.
Second. Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Hopefully Sylvia is enjoying a few days with Ichabod Crane, I believe. Looking for a headless horseman. Uh, we have the minutes from September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Did anybody see any changes?
Well, the only change I see that was present at the said meeting where, now get this, Mr. Joe Denne, City Manager, Mrs. Kelly Ford, Clerk of Council, Mr. Mark Pit- Mark Pitstick, City Attorney. At roll call, the following council members were present: Mr. Jim Blair, Mrs. Sylvia Call, Mr. Jim Christman, and Ted Hawk, Mr. Caleb Johnson, and Mr. Steve Schultz, and Mr. Dale Lynch. You didn't go, Mr.
I'm just a humble servant.
That's the only thing I saw different.
You can add a Mister.
I'm so humble.
Anybody want to make a motion to accept?
With that change, I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call.
Mr. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
That was good.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, that was good. Pick on Ted night. Do we have any communications?
None.
We have Economic Strategies and Cooperation Report. Mr. Johnson, you're up to bat with the pretty pink.
All right. The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the City Council Chambers of One oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty PM. I presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, Council Member, Mr. Jim Christman, Council Member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, Council Member, Mr. Ted Hawk, Council Member, Mr. Dale Lynch, Council Chairperson, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, Economic Development Director, Mr. Mark Pitstick, City Attorney, and Mr. Jody Langley, Assistant Fire Chief, and Mr. Joseph Denon, City Manager. Uh, number one, the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. Number two, the committee noted the status of various business development projects within the downtown area. Number three, the committee noted the upcoming BRNEs with Lowe's. Number four, the committee benefited from an update regarding the workforce development position through the Business Advisory Council. Mrs. Baker noted that the interviews for the position were completed. Number five, Mrs. Baker and Mrs. Ford updated the committee on the recent Scarecrow Festival that will be held on the third weekend of September. The committee noted that it was a successful event. That's quite humble. It was a very successful event, highly successful. And, uh, whenever I went past it, by the way, it was packed, absolutely packed. I normally go earlier. But I want to say again, big success on the Scarecrow Festival.
Six.
Six, committee benefited from a report on downtown development and business interests. Mrs. Baker advised the- that under renovation signs had been purchased for downtown businesses. Number seven, the administration noted that October was manufacturing month. Mrs. Baker advised that the local school students will be touring businesses and industries within the community. Number eight, the committee benefited from a report concerning, uh, commercial development. Number nine, Mrs. Baker advised the committee of the Fall Main Street event that will be held on October eleventh at three o'clock PM. Number ten, the committee benefited from a small business update. Mrs. Baker advised that the revolving loan fund applications would be reviewed. Number eleven, the committee noted the plans for an ODOT semi-parking lot by State Route twenty-two and seven fifty-three. Number twelve, the committee noted that holiday tree lighting plans and sponsorship opportunities were respectfully submitted myself and Mrs. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just wondered where we stood as a city on, on number eleven. Are we gonna try to push it towards twenty-two and seven fifty-three rather than what the proposal from ODOT is?
Hmm, I have not attempted to do that. So you folks need to tell me if you want me to communicate that or not.
Well, it seems like a better use of land if we use that vacant land between twenty-two and sixty-two for truck parking.
Mr. Denne, I'm sorry, but I was advised that is where it's going to be at.
Yes.
On the minutes need to be corrected. It was twenty-two and sixty-two.
Sixty-two, yeah.
Yeah, seven fifty-three.
Okay, yeah. All right.
In the clover leaf, that one section of clover leaf. Okay. I'm confused now.
I didn't mean to blindside.
Yeah, let's tell them.
No. I was very confused about where we were, but that makes sense, yeah. Yes, Ted, we have successfully accomplished what you wanted.
Yes, good, we have it.
And number nine, Mrs. Baker advised the committee of the Fall Main Street event that would be held on October eleventh. What was that?
That was canceled.
They canceled that.
That was canceled, okay, that's it, okay. Because there's a lot going on October the eleventh. I noticed that the dog had- at the dog pound.
Yes.
No, they were gonna-
The fire department has something going on, and then there was this going on, and then there was something else too, I thought. Anyway.
Now, do, there's, uh-
Practical magic.
Yeah, to go for basically like a trick-or-treat thing, Steve.
Pardon me?
Basically for like a trick-or-treat thing, uh, oh, we'll close a section of Fayette Street, uh, oh, from the intersection at Court to the alley.
Okay.
And they'll set up and do like some, some trick-or-treat things there. Uh, do you remember what day, Kelly?
It's gonna be Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
Closing the road.
The eleventh.
For the-
Because there's a lot going on the eleventh. Around town. Okay.
There you go.
Nope.
Someone want to make a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion to accept this minutes. As ready.
With the change to sixty-two.
Yeah, change that to sixty-two. I'm sorry, yeah, probably. It would be around twenty-two and sixty-two. Second.
Yeah, I remember this, sixty-two.
Okay, Caleb's second.
Yeah, there you go.
Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next, we have Finance and Personnel. Mr. Christman, it's even pinker.
Ooh.
Yes, thank you.
The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the City Council Chambers of One oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty PM. I presided. Those in attendance were Mr. Caleb Johnson, Council Member, Mr. Steve Schultz, Council Member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, Council Member, Mr. Ted Hawk, Council Member, and Maine Pizza Eater, Mr. Dale Lynch, Council Chairperson, Mr. Ron Sockman, Finance Director, Mr. Mark Pitstick, City Attorney, Mr. Jody Langley, Assistant Fire Chief, and Mr. Joseph Denon, City Manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report on the statement of cash for the month ending August twenty twenty-five. Number two, the committee benefited from a report on the investments of the City of Washington Courthouse. Number three, Mr. Sockman presented a copy of the highest achievement award that the City of Washington received from the state of Ohio. Number four, the committee noted the pickleball fund has been opened. Number five, the committee noted that ClearGov.com would begin in twenty twenty-six. Number six, the committee benefited from review of the Central Ohio Healthcare Consortium Cost Summary and PACE reports. Administration noted that the current expenses were a concern due to high-cost claims. Number seven, administration benefited from a review of personnel issues. Number eight, the administration noted the upcoming retirement of Mr. Gary Dean from the Service Department and that application process would begin for the position. Number nine, the committee granted the administration permission to apply for a grant for the inclusive playground equipment. The committee recommended that a public meeting be scheduled for October. Respectfully submitted by me and Mrs. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary.
Discussion of that report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't at that meeting, but I do have a question about number nine. Uh, is there a grant for the inclusive playground equipment that I'm not aware of that we're applying for?
That would be that legislation on the agenda, Jim, that land and conservation business. Uh, and then the thirteenth, uh, you'll have a public meeting, um, and that's really- both of those are related to grant application.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, someone want to make a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Mr. Denne, your report, please, sir.
Thank you. It's a beautiful evening in Washington Courthouse. Uh, Market in Clinton Avenue, you've noticed the work there. That is that full-depth repair work. We talked about it in committee. Uh, there you take the, the problem sections of the street, and you go much deeper than you would for normal resurfacing. Uh, and you fix it properly, and then in the following year, with the regular paving program, you'll, you'll go skin the entire street down a bit, grind a little bit of it, and then put a, a nice new uniformed surface on it. But we can get the typically, the transition where we have done full-depth repair to be fairly smooth. Uh, but that is so that you end up with a durable surface. Market has been notorious over the years. You have, uh, oh, a number of steam lines from when you used to have central heating, uh, that was a byproduct, generally, electricity in town. Uh, so you have significant problems in, on Market and always have, and it's an attempt to address a lot of those in Clinton. It's just tremendous amount of wear. Uh, they'll finish up with that, and then we'll transition to the regular, traditional local paving effort, uh, which is in number streets and a couple of little problematic areas that we have, and we'll address those. Leaf pickup, I hate to say that it is that time of year that we start to talk about that. Uh, typically, that occurs at the end of October or first week in November, sometimes maybe a little bit later. Uh, it's a little bit weather and seasonally dependent because some years, they, those trees want to hold on to them a little bit longer than they do in other years, and a lot of it too depends on if you have a storm that comes through and knocks, busts them off. Uh, please don't pile leaves on the, the catch basin. Uh, that just plugs up the, the catch basin, and then when you have a, a storm event, you know, you got a bunch of water everywhere. Uh, and consequently, don't just pile them up just a little bit upstream of the catch basin where they're, they're just gonna immediately wash down in there. If folks could be a little bit helpful with that, that makes a tremendous benefit to you and your neighbors. Uh, sorry about the news, but we are going through dump trucks and getting them ready to make sure that they're ready for winter. Uh, we do have one with a transmission issue that we're looking into. Uh, but, uh, it's time to look at salt spinners and that type of equipment to make sure that that is all in working order, and hopefully we never have to use it. Traffic enforcement, the last two weeks in October, defective mufflers, uh, stereos turned up ridiculously loud. The whole, we do the, the base thing till it thumps, and you know, you can, uh, hear it and feel it. Uh, if you're doing that, you need to turn that down. If you have a muffler issue, you need to get that fixed because the last two weeks in October will be targeted enforcement for that. Uh, this is a quality of life issue, and we hope to make a significant difference, and we'll reevaluate, uh, results when we're done and continue to focus on that issue for a while. Fire Department Open House, one to three. Uh, it's a kid-focused event. Uh, kids have a great time there. They do a lot of different activities with them, and it's a lot of fun for a family. Uh, no new cyber information. They continue to review records. Thursday, October the thirtieth, six to eight reminder, uh, and I'll remind you again on the twenty-second meeting, that is, uh, trick-or-treat, or beggars' night, whichever you prefer. We do it the Thursday before the Halloween, and that is where the calendar falls, six to eight that evening. And I'll remind everybody again, adults need to pay attention to the kids when they're out with them. You need to keep them safe. People need to slow down when they're driving around town. And if you're visiting a neighborhood and you've driven there with, with kids, uh, you need to be respectful and not block people's driveways, and some neighborhoods really aren't equipped for the parking demand that they have, so you need to be respectful of people's property and not, not pull up and cause an issue and problem. Uh, ninety-nine point nine percent of people are very logical about this, but occasionally we have some folks that, well, need a bit of guidance. Cemetery tour, I had a great time. Uh, would like to thank all the participants and all the people that, that came out. I will admit, in my outfit, before it got into the evening, I was a little warm. Uh, and I've done that several years, so I, you know, this year I had my little cooler, a couple bottles of water in it, and I needed that, but then later on in the evening, uh, I ran into the problem that, uh, you know, you drink water, and then eventually you gotta do something about it, and cemetery, not there ain't a whole lot you can do about it. So by the time we were done, I was really ready to, to, to get out of there.
How far from the creek were you, Jim?
Well, I tell you, down there, if you get away from the area where there's light, that, that, that's dark.
Yeah.
That is dark. Uh, Christmas trees on the courthouse lawn decorated the week after Thanksgiving for tree lighting on December the fourth. Last year, there were twenty-one trees. This year, they already have more than half of those. People have, have said that they want to, to volunteer and do that, so if you want to do that, you need to, to get, uh, in motion. Uh, would like to thank the many volunteers, but especially Rhonda Turner, ERI Real Estate. Uh, last year was the first year that we did this, and Rhonda just came in one day and asked, you know, what do you think about this? And I'm like, well, we gotta talk to commissioners, and they were very cooperative about it. Uh, and it's a lot of fun for folks. Uh, hopefully this year, when you do the tree lighting, it's not two degrees, which is what I remember about the last one. Uh, but there, we'll have to do a little bit of, of evaluation too about how many trees you can, can actually set up there with some of, how we're gonna do some electric issues and so forth, but that is a tremendous amount of fun. It brings a lot of people out too, and it's a nice evening. To participate, donate, or have a question, you need to go to lightupthesaison@gmail.com. Need to email that with your desire to, to sponsor a tree, or if you want to donate, let them know that, or if you have a question. Uh, new legislation, you have a piece of legislation that basically says it's okay for us to apply for a grant. That would be for playground equipment for Washington Park next to the, the splash bed. That would be that inclusive playground equipment project. And then we have legislation, uh, the ASME Union, the, the unionized employees of the Service Department have passed their contract, so that is R forty-one, twenty twenty-five. Would really like to, uh, thank, uh, the union members. It's not really, union negotiations here aren't traditionally what people think that they are. Uh, it's, it's a conversation. This one took a little bit longer than usual, uh, but we arrived at a conclusion that I think is very nice for everybody involved. And earlier today, in committee, Gary Dean talked today. Gary Dean is one of the employees that actually truly cared about the place, and we're blessed with many of those. Gary's dedication, concern, and effort over the years have all, it's, it's exceptional. And the January thirtieth is not something that I look forward to at all, but, uh, I'm happy that, that Gary's happy and that he's reached a point in his life where he can, uh, have time for other interests. And, uh, he's always had a, a little herd of cattle that have always been incredibly well-tended, and I imagine those will be the most babied cows that there's ever in the world now. But I, I mean, Gary, a little hard for me to talk about it because he honestly, truly cared about it, and that's just a, oh, a breath of fresh air in many respects. That's everything I had to talk about tonight.
Joe, I had a question. When will they be done in front of Kroger's?
When will they be done in front of Kroger's?
With the work they're doing? No, I'm talking about, you know, it doesn't take very long for some of them.
No, that should be done relatively quickly. Actually, we're gonna, I'm gonna phone a friend.
Gary. Now, working in front of Kroger, when they gonna be done? It might already be in Karen.
I was gonna say, usually, working late in front of Kroger. Usually, I don't know.
They're done already.
They're done already.
People will be happy if they go to Kroger's.
Uh, any other questions?
Oh, um, Joe, I know we've talked about cameras in our parks. What's the status of getting those first cameras up and running?
They've installed a number of the, the cameras on the street. Now, the price of those, when we originally looked at it, uh, went up a bit. So there's the street cameras there. The fund that I can use for that, that isn't regular tax dollars, um, that will acquire a little bit more money, so then we'll look at expanding that camera system. We'll want them to get a little bit of experience with what they have, to see if they want to do anything a little bit differently. Uh, but there you'll have, uh, a little bit more, uh, accumulation of money in that, that fund, and they'll be able to then look at where they want to put those in the parks.
And, and that's the one with the, uh, technology where you can just look up, like, blue shirt, and they can, like, track.
Yeah.
Oh, great, excellent.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Denne. Mr. Sockman, your report's usually next meeting. Anything tonight?
Nothing to report tonight.
Mr. Pitstick?
Yes, uh, my office has, has started implementing a new, uh, case management system called Carpal. Uh, it is a case management system that allows us, me as a prosecutor, to make sure that I gather all the information and can offer the discovery to opposing counsel and help me, uh, in prosecuting a case. And what it basically does is, Mr. Lynch referred to, uh, the police departments figures, but if you take everybody that I have in the county, I have three departments. I have the, the Washington Courthouse, the sheriff, and the Highway Patrol, and every officer now, uh, that's on the road with whichever, uh, law enforcement organization has a camera. And so that'll allow us to keep all the video and audio up in the cloud, and we can then download it directly to my, my computer or the courthouse computer. And when we try a case, it also allow the defense counsel to get a copy real easy. So it allows us to keep track of all of this information, which it takes about three hours for me to download a, a typical, uh, video from cars to my, to my office and put it on the thumb drive, then present it to counsel, a defense counsel, when they ask for discovery. So this is going to make it a lot easier for us to do that, and we can maintain a, a, a large number of videos because it's not our equipment, it's, it's their equipment, so I think that'd be helpful in the future.
This, this camera equipment that the officers wear.
Body cam.
Body cam?
Yes.
When is it turned on?
It's, it's turned on when, when they activate, my understanding is when, when they're within thirty seconds, I believe, of, of their stop. So it's all, it's on all the time, but as soon as they activate their lights and they start their, their case, my understanding, they can push the button or it will automatically come on.
So it will automatically come on possibly, yes, good. And then it records even if, just a traffic stop?
Yes.
Anything?
Speeding, a speeding ticket.
Okay.
A stop sign, whatever they have in front of them.
Okay, but not just when it, they, they start record, so it's always recording.
Right.
And then imagine that, uh, let's say they flip on their lights, that activates it. It doesn't just start at the moment they turn on their lights. It actually goes back and saves that previous thirty seconds to two minutes, depending on the settings. Um, it, it will actually show that as well.
So when they activate that camera system, it automatically is recording?
Yes.
And it goes to the cloud right then, or does it go to a different?
No.
Drive somewhere else?
No, it, it, it saves it in the camera.
Okay, it's in the camera system.
Every day they have to download their information.
That was gonna be my next question, do they download it?
Right, into the police, the police department. I don't believe they, I don't know whether they're in the cloud right now or not, but it downloads into the cloud for them, and they can save it there.
At the end of their shift?
Yes.
They download their camera equipment?
And the, the cars also have camera and, uh, audio.
Right, okay, all right, thank you.
Sounds good, Mr. Pitstick. I'd like to make your job a lot easier.
It will.
And better for the defense.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Ford, we have a clerk's report this evening. Do you want to talk about that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before counsel is a request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a liquor permit name change only to the Rusty Cake Corporation doing business as the Rusty Cake Tavern and Patio located at eighteen oh one Columbus Avenue, Washington Courthouse, Ohio, from Rusty Cake LLC located at eighteen oh one Columbus Avenue, Washington Courthouse, Ohio. This request has been reviewed by the, um, Chief of Police with no objections. Does counsel have any objections to this request?
I'm not, I'm just asking, uh, there is no change of ownership or anything in this?
No, sir. Not that I'm aware of, no.
So they're just clarifying what they do?
Sure. Okay.
Any other questions? Then we will close the clerk's report. We have no, uh, local residents and taxpayers who have asked to speak this evening, so we'll move on to legislation. And starting with that that's been previously introduced, and Resolution number R thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I'll move for the Resolution R thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five, on second reading.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-seven dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denne, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mr. Rick Garrison to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees with the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
I'll move for adoption.
Tagging.
Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Resolution number R thirty-eight, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I may replace Resolution number R thirty-eight, twenty twenty-five, on second reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call?
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution Number R thirty-eight dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the City Manager and/or the City Service Director of the City of Washington Courthouse to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required to Dayton Avenue pulver pipe, small structure replacement, tile and grading improvements.
Move for adoption. I'll second that.
Roll call?
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Resolution Number R thirty-nine twenty-two-five, second reading.
I'll move, we put Resolution R thirty-nine twenty-two-five on second reading.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution Number R thirty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the City Manager, Joseph J. Denon, of the City of Washington Courthouse, to award a contract to Fillmore Construction for the twenty-two-five street and alley resurfacing program.
I'll move for adoption.
Tagging.
We miss Sylvia here. Roll call?
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Next is new legislation in writing, and we'll start with Resolution Number R forty twenty-two-five, first reading.
I'll move, we put Resolution R forty twenty-two-five on first reading.
Second.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
You sure.
Okay. Mr. Denon, was there an amount of money that this grant is supposed to be for?
Oh, gonna ask for, oh, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Now, ask what you get.
But we can request whatever we want on that.
Well, you gotta, yeah, there's a project estimate attached to that, and the nice thing about playground is that that's scalable. So if they told us, you know, you, let's say they award grant, but they say that, you know, we can only do four fifty, that playground, it's scalable, that's really easy to do there.
Good question, Jim. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution Number R forty dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, City Manager, to apply for funding through the Land and Conservation Fund Program and accepting great obligations if funded.
And last, but not least, is Resolution Number R forty-one twenty-two-five, first reading.
I'll move, we put Resolution R forty-one twenty-two-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion?
I know there was a lot of hard work put into this, and I think we do pretty well for our employees here in town. We often talk about how good a job they do for us as a city, but I also think we take pretty good care of them. I think this should be considered by our employees to be a good contract. So I appreciate the work that was done. And this is a good place to work. Shouldn't have trouble getting employees for our town. That's all.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution Number R forty-one dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution approving the contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Ohio, Council Eight AFL dash CIO Local Three Eight One Nine.
Thank you. Mr. Hawke, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, I miss Mrs. Call sitting over here. Especially on legislation, she's the first one to
I know, and she backs me.
make a motion. Actually, doesn't give us that much of a chance to, but anyway, I'm hoping she's having a good time. And happy to excuse her, as we did. I think that's all I have.
Mr. Christman, what do you have this evening?
About the same as Ted, just like to thank the people who came to visit us, come back and see us again. That's all I have.
Mr. Schultz, what do you have?
Well, just that, you know, you keep thinking about things with the city council, and the word change, and change means something different. Well, in our case, in the city council, we've been through a lot of change. We change it constantly. There's always change going on in the city council and things in the city. It's a constant, over the last four to six years, there's a lot of changes. We have a new financial director, which we've changed. We have a new, we have new people working in the finance department, which is a great thing. We have an HR department, which was a big change. There's a lot of other change in the city. We're changing the downtown, the way the downtown looks, and the structure of the downtown. There's change coming as far as employment and housing and opportunity for people and the citizens here in Washington Courthouse to have a great, like you referred to, people working for the city, to have a great lifestyle here in Washington Courthouse. We have more changes coming in the near future. We just had an announcement tonight with the Service Department, there'll be a change. And there's gonna be some other changes coming up also. So there's a lot, we do nothing but change constantly. So we have to be ready and willing to change, and that's what we do a lot of. And the other part of it would be, there's good change and there's bad change. A good change would be, if you wore the same pair of socks for a month, you may wanna change them, so that would be a good change. And the other change, or bad change, might be if you, if you talk to any winning coach, and they have a winning team, the last thing they wanna do is change, because change can cause disruptions, change can cause drama, change can cause a lot of other problems and get you off your mission. And all our council members, that's been in this council for many years, we have a mission for the city. We're working on that mission to move the city forward in a positive way. And we can see that all around us with the, like I said, the employment, the opportunity here, the new housing, everything that's going on around the city and the county. So the last thing you'd wanna do is make any big changes when you got a winning team. So that's where I'd like to be at. Thank you very much.
Mr. Blair?
Two things, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to remind the city of this Saturday, the Fayette County Dog Shelter benefit from eleven till two. I encourage everybody to go out and take a dog home with you. Plenty of them out there. And secondly, I think Mr. Denon was alluding, talking about his participation in the cemetery historic, whatever the name of that was, review.
Tour.
Tour, tour, okay. I would like to make a motion that next year, they put a porta potty out there. Right beside Mr. Denon.
Yes.
Yes. Well, don't make it that obvious. Find it behind the chapel or something. That's all I have. That's a good, that's a good one. There should be one out there, quite frankly.
Jim, EPA would probably approve that over the creek, so anyway. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
First of all, thank you to everyone who comes both tonight and all the other nights. So our first timers, as well as we've got some faces who, I always say the Custer Keys are the most educated citizens in all of Washington Courthouse. They really all, you know, your engagement, Custer Keys, right? So I have been doing these videos on Facebook for my platform and just telling people, and, you know, the thing with our culture now is you have to make them short. So I try to make them under two minutes. That's short for me, all right? Now I have, on these three videos, only three videos, over twelve thousand views on those videos. And the average watch time of those views, less than eighteen seconds. Less than eighteen seconds. And we, yeah, we laugh, and we know, but isn't that sad? Isn't that really sad that you literally have a situation where your neighbors are up here trying to do good work, and we communicate to you, and we tell you, hey, look at what we're doing, look at what we wanna do, and you can't listen to them longer than eighteen seconds? There's a real problem that we have a breakdown in our society. It's like a sickness. And these people will comment, and it's not the people here, the people here are engaged with, you know, I have great conversations. It's funny, there's like seven people who always comment negative things on all my videos. So it's the same seven people. And I've looked them up, none of them are registered voters. I've looked them up, none of them. And no matter what I would say, one, they wouldn't listen to it. But two, they're so set in being oppositional that it really makes me worry about the future of discourse, not just in our community. It's not, it's not just a community thing. This is, this is cultural. This is across states, this is, you know, nationwide. You know, I talk about how I want us to do right by the families in this community and make sure we have nice parks. And people comment, they go, oh, you're so wrong, you're so wrong, how dare you try to improve our parks? They go, why don't you care about the homelessness in our parks? Why should we have, why should we have good parks if we have homeless people in our parks? How dare you, Mr. Johnson, is what they say. They talk about the drug epidemic. Caleb Johnson, until you stop the drug epidemic, we shouldn't have good parks. Mr. Johnson, you're wrong, rent is too high. Rent is just too high, Mr. Johnson, make our rent lower before we even think about making our parks go. Mr. Johnson, groceries are too expensive. These are all things people say. They're there, written, documented, out there on the internet now, maybe forever. Then they say, well, we need to reduce taxes. We need to reduce taxes. We did. We did. And then they also say, well, put in new sidewalks. Put in new sidewalks. We could reduce our taxes to zero. We can wind it all up. And you won't ever get new sidewalks. You won't ever get new paving. You won't ever get new parks. And shame on people who bring up homelessness. They don't care about homelessness. It's so sad that these things are being twisted. And that's the state of our discourse, is to say, oh, no, no on new parks, no on good things for our children because of the homeless people. That I know for a fact, those people who comment those things, what have they done for our homeless? It's really sad. It's really sad. So I think, I'm really uplifted whenever I go out and I door knock and I talk to people in our community. I love it. And then, and then whenever you look and you try to be open and communicate online, because that's how people say they want you to communicate, you just kinda get brought back down a little bit. So, you know, Mr. Chairman, I just, I can't fix homelessness. That's a, that's a problem, not in our community, but in surrounding communities as well. I can't fix the drug epidemic. That's something that's affecting many communities. I can't fix people's rent being too high. And I only know of one local politician who's really trying to say that they can address groceries being too expensive. That's that Mom Donnie in New York. He's saying he wants to have private, or government-owned grocery stores. He wants to just give food away at a cheaper price. I don't want Washington Courthouse to go in the grocery business. I don't think that'll be good for anybody. I don't, I don't believe in that democratic socialism stuff. So I don't know. I don't know that there's necessarily a way that we can fix all of these problems, but I do know that we can fix our parks. We can fix our parks, Mr. Chairman, and I think we wanna do that. I think we're committed to that. And I just hope that the discourse gets back to a reasonable place where people see that we really do want some good things for our people, and we're not just kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just say in closing, this is the month when we recognize firemen. And I think they should be recognized all twelve months, but this is the month we especially recognize them. And so I say thanks to our local firefighters, and thanks to firefighters everywhere for the service that they provide. It's one of those things that, you know, you don't think about it until your house is on fire. And so I really appreciate what they do, and I know they have, during this month, they have a lot of little kids up at the fire department to get to climb around on fire trucks and so on, and I think that's really great. The other thing I wanna mention, I want to thank Gail Allen and your committee, Gail, for setting up the candidates night. And I really appreciate that. It was fun to have Marshall McPeek there. I thought he did a great job. So to you and your committee, thank you. But I also wanna say that I really appreciate the way the other four, I hope I did too, but the other four candidates dealt with everything. I appreciated the comments made by everybody. I thought it was, just going along with what you just said, Caleb. I thought it was positive. I thought it was good. I went away from there. I had a good feeling about everybody. And so, anyway, Gail, thank you.
You were scared what I was gonna say, wasn't you?
There was a lot of positive feedback that I got back from you.
What'd you say?
You were scared what I was gonna say, wasn't you?
Yeah, I, again, I think every, I really appreciate it.
I may have a bit of it.
Yeah, I do. And so anyway, when things like that happen, Caleb, I feel better about the world. So anyway, with that, does someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned at about eight eighteen, I think.